Okay, call this Village of Green Hills council meeting for September 27, 2022 to order. Clerk call to roll.
Mr. Walter?
Here.
Ms. Herman?
Here.
Mr. Lee?
Here.
Ms. Hudson?
Here.
Ms. Alcindor-Guillen?
Here.
Ms. Walton?
Here.
And a roll. Here. Okay. Prayer by Maria Walther.
Lord, we ask you to send your Spirit of servanthood upon all of us here this evening to do your work for the benefit of all in our community. We ask you to bless our elected and appointed officials so they may deliberate with wisdom and act with courage. Bless the members of our community who comes here to speak before council so they state their cause with honesty and humility. Lord, we ask you to bless us all, and we'll ask you specifically to teach us to be generous in listening so we may understand others' points of view. So one day, we will go into your kingdom as good and faithful servants, and we ask this in the name of our brother Jesus. Amen.
Amen.
I bless allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay, we've got the minutes from previous council meetings for August 23rd and work session of September 13th. If there's no corrections to be made...
Mr. Mayor, no corrections.
Okay.
Can I make a correction?
Mm-hmm.
Under the reports of committees, it said that my report was reported by Mr. Jack Lee. So I think it was just left in there from the time he did make my report, but he doesn't have to report for me. So I actually was the one talking.
Okay.
I concur.
And the minutes then stand approved with that one correction.
Okay.
Okay. All right, so have reports of municipal affiliates, because we have no public hearing scheduled. Reports of municipal officials, municipal manager, Yvonne Kovak.
Thank you, Mayor. I wanted to review the legislation on tonight's agenda. The first item is an ordinance. It's the second reading for this ordinance, and it would create a new chapter in our code regarding small cell facilities. Next item is a resolution executing an agreement with the Hamilton County Board of Commissioners. This is for the fire department in use in repairing fire hydrants. The county has a good program to service those at a reasonable cost, much more reasonable than we've been paying, so the fire department would like us to execute that agreement for them so they can take advantage of those savings. The next one is a resolution, which you see quite often. This resolution, this supplemental is adding money into the legislative area, actually, because at the beginning of the year when we did the appropriation, we didn't know we had Teresa. So that gives us additional money as we approach the end of the year in a different situation than what we were in at the beginning. And then the last item, approving the amounts and rates. This is something that council does annually when the Hamilton County Budget Committee sends the, not the proposed, but their estimated rates that we would get from each of our levies. And they provide that to us, and we're supposed to, you are supposed to certify them back to the county, and we can do our appropriation, so. I just have a couple other items. The parking lot project behind the shopping center has started, and it should go fairly quickly. They are going to avoid any kind of repairs during Harvest Fest, so we have used that parking lot. And then I also wanted to mention for residents that leaf collection starts Monday, so it's hard to believe, but the leaves are coming down rather quickly, so that's all I have right now.
Any comments or questions, manager? Law Director, Jeff Forbes.
Thank you, Mayor. Like last time, we have no pending legal matters, and there's been no new legislation of municipal interest at the state, so I have nothing to report.
Do you want him to talk about...
Do you want to go through the small cell stuff now, or when we get to the legislation? Your comments back from...
Oh...
What do you think's best? With the legislation or now?
Yeah.
Legislation.
I would say do it now, because there might be comments on it that happen before we get to the legislation.
Sure. So you mean those questions that were raised?
Your review of the article and...
Oh, oh, yeah, yeah. Let me find that.
I'm sorry, I didn't...
No, no, you're fine. Let me just find that. It'll be easier if I do that than try to do it from memory. Can I just say that the handout of the agenda to the ordinance, if I have a big stick in this one? I mean, I have it, but I don't probably use mine in the house. While I find it, I don't want to hold everything up. I don't know if you want to go on with other reports just until I can find that email that I sent.
Okay. We'll jump back.
I have it here if you...
That's a copy of the email that I... Oh, well then.
Yes.
If you don't mind, then I'll just...
Reverse it back? Yeah.
Sure.
Does anybody have Page Six?
I do.
Was this too some of the stuff again?
I don't know. I don't have a six either, but I want to leave it where it was.
There's bullet points.
There's no place to make copies here, is there?
No.
Would you like me to just go ahead? Okay, sure. And it may be, I don't want to, I mean, I'm happy to read the whole thing, but I don't necessarily need to. I think the response that I gave was that at the last council meeting, some residents had provided an article that referenced a federal court case from New York, and I have had a chance to review that, the decision, although my opinion is that that case does not provide any additional authority to Green Hills, being that we're in Ohio and that case was from New, well, originated in New York. That was presented to us under the theory that that case seemed to give you more authority to regulate things on private property, not just in the right-of-way, but if you actually look at that case, that was an application that was denied for a small cell facility in the public right-of-way. So that whole, everything about that case was about an application in the right-of-way. So that's, initially, that tells me that that case doesn't really provide any additional authority related to private property, because that's not what that case was about. It does quote some provisions of the Federal Telecommunications Act that provides that no state or local statute or regulation may prohibit or have the effect of prohibiting the ability of any entity to provide any interstate or intrastate telecommunications services. So even under the Act, the village would have no authority to prohibit small cell facilities. The Act goes on to state that nothing in the Act affects the authority of a state or local government to manage the public rights of way on a competitively neutral and non-discriminatory basis. So the Act does give state and local governments the ability to manage their public right-of-way. The state of Ohio has done that, and because they've done that, and they've done it in such a way that it's supposed to have what's called statewide impact, we, as a municipality, even a charter municipality, can't deviate from that state law. This is a situation where the state law trumps what a municipality would be able to do. The result of that New York case, by the way, was that the application was denied, and that denial was affirmed by the federal court. But it was denied by the local government based on, well, what this is, is the following grounds, that the significant adverse aesthetic and property values impact of the 18 nodes permeating the tiny village. So this was an application for 18 nodes, as they're referred to here. There's no, it was denied because there was no gap in wireless coverage for Verizon and no need to justify the significant adverse impacts. And number three, X to net, which was the applicant, their refusal to submit for consideration an actual fixed plan for each of those 18 wireless nodes. So it should be noted that one of those reasons for the denial was that there was found to be no gap in wireless coverage. So in that particular case in New York, one of the things that they requested as part of the application was what is sometimes called a feasibility study or some evidence that says you need to show that there's a gap here before you can put it in here. But this goes back to the law in Ohio, which it's 4939.0313, specifically prohibits municipal corporations from requiring information related to coverage, capacity, or any justification for the need of a new small cell facility. So while that is something that may be pertinent and relevant in other places, in Ohio, because the state of Ohio has enacted statewide regulations on this, you are not, local governments are not permitted to even ask for that gap in coverage proof or study. As we've discussed before, the state law in Ohio provides authority for local governments to promulgate certain regulations related to small cell facilities only in the public right-of-way. Again, when you look at the state law, the authority that we have is only related to the public right-of-way. The federal case from New York does not provide any additional authority to regulate small cell facilities on private property. Even if it did, we would still be, the Village of Green Hills would still be preempted by the Ohio state law that does not provide that authority. So that was sort of the, I pretty much did read the whole thing. So thank you for that. So I guess bottom line is, the ordinance that you have before you, for your consideration, it does, it does exercise all the authority that the state law in Ohio provides for you to do.
Comments or questions, the law director?
Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay. Moving on, Chief of Police, Neil Ferdeman. Whoops, missed clerk of council. I should have brought my glasses. Clerk of council, anything to report?
No, not tonight.
Okay. Chief of Police, Neil Ferdeman.
Thanks, Mayor. Couple of personnel issues. We're very pleased to announce that Green Hills Police Department has a new sergeant, Carl Holbrook, tested first in an assessment center that was conducted by three local police administrators. They had the final say, and he got the highest score in the center. That brings us back to somewhere where we were probably a little more than a decade ago, where the department for many years had a lieutenant and two sergeants. And the reason that I asked the manager to consider this appointment was that we have two squads of officers, and one squad for the last decade or so has been unsupervised while the other squad has a sergeant. This is especially needed at a time when we have some young personnel, so this will provide guidance to the other squad of officers, and I think it will be extremely beneficial to the department. You may have noticed that some of the leadership of the department isn't in our 30s anymore, so this new supervisor is. So we're very pleased to have the next generation of leaders emerge for the future of the department. On a sad note, we did lose one of our, well, our newest officer, Jared Francis, left us to go with the Hamilton County Sheriff's Office. He was very excited about some diversity of positions available in a large department, so he hopes to get some specialization sometime in his future. Although we hated to lose Jared, he was a very good officer, we're very excited at the quality of the applicants that we have interviewed so far. We've interviewed five, and we have several more to interview before final selection is made. The first day of interviews in interviewing five candidates, I think we interviewed two African-American candidates, an Asian candidate, and a female candidate. So all five, in my estimation, were hireable at this point, so we will narrow that down to get the very best for our department. We did have a couple of crimes that took place within the last month, on September 11th and through September 13th. In our I and J sections, we had thefts from vehicles. We believe all of those vehicles were either unlocked or somehow there was pretty easy access to them. One of the things that is just unbelievable to me is the scope of valuables that people will leave in their vehicles. This last round captured $200 in cash that was in one vehicle, credit cards that were in another. There were some other items of value that were stolen, and we would remind people that are certainly watching on Waycross TV to please, please lock your vehicles. Even if you do lock your vehicles, don't leave valuables in there, and particularly values that have been in plain sight. So we posted pictures of the thief. Thank goodness for surveillance cameras and ring doorbells, so we have some good photos of our suspect, and if anyone is familiar, you can look on our website. If familiar with this individual, please let us know. The other crime that we had was an unsolved crime at our Dollar General store on Iswin Street, and this was a quick change artist that went in and quickly made change, different things in the store, unbelievably ended up being out over $1,200. So this crime also occurred at a Dollar General in Loveland, Ohio, so he was making the rounds. And once again, we posted the pictures on our website and also on Crime Stoppers. We did have a defensive tactics class this past month. We were really proud of the fact that we got some five-star reviews, so that was kind of a cool thing for us on Google. That was a first. But we have another one coming up next month. I would urge you to consider if there's anyone in your family that lacks a little confidence being out in today's increasingly dangerous world, this is a free class. We've always had good reviews from it. It will be held on Saturday, October 15th, at 10 o'clock at the municipal building, and we would urge anyone that's interested to consider attending. The price is right for the class. We will be at Harvest Fest this coming weekend, October 1st, from 4 to 8. We'll have a cruiser there for kids of all ages to explore and inspect, and we'll have some goodies for children and some crime prevention tips for adults. We continue to train our officers. Officer Holbrook, in a timely fashion, just completed a one-week course in officer-in-charge and supervision, and he will be attending additional supervisory training this spring. All of our officers will participate in our biannual defensive tactics training on October 13th, and we will have an upcoming departmental meeting on October 20th, and we have projected already our scheduled training segments on death investigations, updates to our departmental computer system, domestic violence, and pursuits. Just a, kind of a funny note, sports is active with our officers in the fall, well, in summer. Officer Blake Mayberry noted on August 23rd, he played baseball with seven juveniles at Palma Park. He said he scored one home run and was told he was a good pitcher. And August 30th, he changed to football, and he tossed football with two younger brothers in the F-section, and he played against the youngest, who was in third grade, did fairly well, won eight to five. The older brother was a different scorer, and he attributed that to the fact that he's a sixth grader and was an all-time quarterback. During the past month, we made 27 criminal arrests, charges for aggravated menacing, contributing to the delinquency of a minor, domestic violence, operating a vehicle under the influence, failure to appear, menacing by stalking, open container, drug possession, and animals running at large. We responded to a total of 197 incidents, including 29 squad runs, 13 parking complaints, 10 intrusion alarms, 10 warrants served, seven animal complaints, seven lost dogs, seven checks on the well-being of people, six disabled vehicles, six domestic trouble runs, six suspicious persons, and five trouble runs. We provided mutual aid to both Springfield Township and Forest Park in 18 instances. We issued 43 traffic citations, 52 warnings, and investigated six traffic crashes. Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Comments or questions of the chief?
Will the elevator be fixed before defensive tactics, or where's it going to be at? Is it going to be at...
It will be, and we're keeping our fingers crossed that repairs will be made. It is operational right now if we need it, but it's not in the final stage yet.
We're hopeful.
All right, the mayor's report. I've got August mayor's court numbers. State of Ohio received $10.79. Hamilton County, $42. And the Village of Green Hills, $5,312. And I'm back from vacation, as everybody can see. All right, moving on, reports of committees, service and streets. Jennifer Osmanoglu.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. At the work session two weeks ago, we had a lot of discussion about trees and maintenance around the village, so I just, we'll keep that up, and we have to kind of look at finances and that kind of thing, but it's on the front burner, at least for me, so we'll keep that, those conversations going. Thank you.
Okay. Safety, Melanie Hermes.
We met today in attendance with myself, council member Maria Walther, Mayor Moore, Yvonne Kovak, and Neil Ferdeman. We did talk about a couple concerns about trespass pass out of the church and the laundromat. We talked about some issues that were happening around the new development. There was some profanity directed at them and stealing of some signs, but there's been no recurrence. Then we did talk about the thefts from unlocked vehicles. Again, a reminder to lock your vehicle and not keep valuables in them or in plain sight. We also talked about getting a potential fire marshal to help inspect businesses. And then we talked about possibly, Chief Spade had mentioned that there's possible having a fire lane on day spring. It's kind of tight for the emergency apparatus. And then we talked about the personnel promotion, as well as the process going on, and the defensive tactics. So that was our meeting today. We will possibly have one in the final quarter of the year, but since it would be, three months from now is around Christmas time, we'll see what's on the schedule and if we need to have it earlier in December, or if we should push it to January, depending on what's out there. That's it. And I will have a resolution to read, but the manager discussed that about the fire hydrants.
Okay. Financing audit, Jack Lee.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Not much to report tonight. I don't have the highlights for the month of August, but do keep your eye out in your email box for that, and you can review it yourself. We will be meeting in the near future, as Deb's working on the appropriations for 2023, so stay tuned on that.
Good, thanks. And our governmental affairs, laws and rules, Maria Walther.
Community development.
Well, yeah, we'll get that. Community development. Jennifer Hudson.
It'll be a little bit of a...
Jeff Hauder.
It'll be a little bit of a hybrid, and crossing a little bit over into recreation, which I, until Rachel gets fully on board, will probably say similar things. Just a reminder that the Harvest Fest is 4 to 8 coming up on Saturday, and I saw that the rain is supposed, was supposed to be higher. It's 30% chance. Hopefully, it keeps falling in that direction, but it's seeming like fall weather seems like a good time to come out. Just for those of you out there, we'll have live music. There's going to be several food trucks and vendor, craft vendors, glass blowing truck is always a lot of fun, pumpkin decorating for the kids. It should be a really good time. Speaking of that, is I have your volunteer hours. Make sure that those are correct. If you could pass those down to Jack and Rachel, that would be good. I have an upcoming ordinance to read, and we are going to have community development and recreation. Recreation on October 13th will be at 5:30, and the community development meeting will be at 6 o'clock. One thing I guess I'll add on, excited about where I met with the mayor, and I think that community development, the fire is burning again, as far as, you know, what we can do to make the village a really sound place to be, a good place to be. So please continue to let us know your ideas on how we can make the community better. I know it's always an ongoing battle. I will mention that I met, was able to help a resident out, and one of the things that happened was, in our discussion, was there was probably three or four things that were mentioned that were false. Things that had been said on Facebook, things that had been said, and because I knew of certain situations, I was able to put the correct information in place, and it made a lot more sense to them. I would just be really, really cautious about what you're hearing. It doesn't mean it's all false, but it does take a lot of work to investigate. We have a lot on our plates, but be very, I think just all of us should be very cautious about that first thing you hear, you know, make sure that there's some truth to it before owning it. I think it would be healthy for everybody. That concludes my report.
All right, now, in our governmental affairs, laws and rules, Maria Walther.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. We met today at 6 o'clock, and the part of the agenda that was discussed had to do with the Village of Green Hills cyber liability policy. We discussed the purpose, the internet, the email, the network security, hardware security, data security, employee responsibilities. We came to the conclusion right now that we are in very good shape. We have a cyber policy insurance as well, and the chief of police is going to, will be checking further and let us know if we need some further assistance on that. And we concluded the meeting at 6:18. We always have the meeting at the same day as safety, and whenever safety gets announced, then if we need to, we will have the laws and rules. So I was looking November or December, and then the same concerns were in November, we have the Thanksgiving at that time, and then a Christmas would be in December. So unless it's something that we have absolutely to resolve, and we can do that on the work session or something like that, we will resume our meeting then. Thank you very much, Mr. Mayor, and if you can please leave this to the village manager for those I might note to her.
Great. Recreation, cable television, Jennifer Hudson. Rachel Hudson.
Charlie has a lot more money than I do, so I'll take it. Mine short, we're having our first meeting October 13th after the Harvest Fest, so that's it. Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Okay, all right. Is that a Thursday? Is that right? The 13th or 15th?
13th, it should be a Thursday, yes. About 5:30.
13th, okay. I won't be able to make that meeting, but you don't need me.
Thank you.
We do, we do need you.
Okay. Now, if I can read this. This is an opportunity for residents and non-residents to make comments solely regarding legislation that is current, on the current agenda, non-residents must obtain prior permission. This is the time for citizens to comment on legislation listed on the agenda for this session of council. When recognized, please come forward to the podium, complete the sign-in sheet. Verbally indicate if you are a resident of Green Hills or a non-resident, and then state your comments. Comments will be limited to four minutes, and we don't have our sophisticated timer, or do we? No. Timer?
I've got to watch.
We'll make Yvonne the official timer.
We'll make him.
Make him?
You want me to?
Oh, okay. All right.
And thank you for pointing that out. I took a picture of Page Six and sent it to everybody up here, so thank you for pointing out that we mustn't.
Page Six, one?
Monique Mason-Halter, Green Hills resident. I'm here tonight to again ask councilmembers to pass an ordinance that would provide the maximum power available to Green Hills to regulate the placement of wireless facilities here, so as to prevent the irresponsible placement of these facilities and to prevent the adverse impacts they could have on our community. I've mentioned at past meetings, other local councils have already passed strong ordinances, including Amberly Village, Anderson Township, Marymont, and Springdale. These municipalities are all following FCC and government regulations, but they are not limiting themselves to them. Based on the Federal Telecommunications Act of 1996, we have the right to not have wireless infrastructure installed in neighborhoods where there are no wireless service gaps. We have other rights as well. It is my understanding that the Ohio law that Jeff Forbes referenced at last month's meeting regarding home rule does not override the Telecommunications Act. Of course, he's welcome to correct me on that. Council members' reluctance to write a strong ordinance leaves our neighborhoods vulnerable to companies installing unneeded and unwanted wireless facilities. Even Jeff Forbes referred to this at the last meeting. I've transcribed what he said at that meeting regarding the health, safety, and welfare section of the ordinance as it stands. I've condensed his words due to time constraints. From Jeff, this entire ordinance is based on the authority that the state of Ohio has given to municipalities to regulate small cell facilities. It's in chapter 4939 of the Ohio Revised Code. Everything that we're doing here has to comply with 4393. Or I'm sorry, 4939. So it sounds like Jeff said we have the ability to regulate wireless facilities according to the Ohio Revised Code. Back to Jeff. 4939.037 does not, does say that nothing in this chapter precludes a municipal corporation from applying its generally acceptable, applicable health, safety, and welfare regulations when granting consent for a small cell facility or wireless support structure. That's all it says. It does not provide any definition or any guidance on what that means. So it still sounds like Jeff has said we have the ability to regulate according to Ohio Revised Code. Back to Jeff. What I would tell you is that the state law and 4939.02, titled "State Policy," affirmatively put forth the policy to promote the rapid deployment of small cell facility infrastructure and related capital investment in this state by ensuring that municipal corporations grant or deny consent to install, operate, modify, or replace wireless facilities in a timely manner. Yes, it does say that you can consider health, safety, and welfare reasons. So again, it sounds like Jeff has said we have the ability to regulate. Back to Jeff. But you have to look at that in terms of the overall policy, which the state has put forth, which is to promote the rapid deployment of small cell facility infrastructure. The policy was to promote the installation of these facilities. So Jeff seems to have said that the state is promoting rapid deployment, but municipalities still have the right to regulate it, which is what other local councils have already done, by passing strong protective ordinances. Then Jeff said, if you are going to deny the facility based on just a general health, safety, and welfare objection, the burden would be very high, because that would be contrary to the policy of the state of Ohio to put forth the implementation. He also says, quote, "I can't provide any real specific guidance, because the state law doesn't," end quote. So Ohio Revised Code allows municipalities to regulate small cell facilities, and the Telecom Act of 1996 allows municipalities to use the maximum power available to them to regulate. Therefore, we have the right to not have wireless infrastructure installed in neighborhoods where there are no wireless service gaps. And we also have rights, other rights, which I've mentioned here before.
That's fine.
Okay.
May I finish? I have one sentence.
Finish it.
I am asking council again to include everything that we have the right to have in our ordinance. Thank you.
Anyone else?
It's not a busy book. I just had a couple of quick questions, because at the.
Oh, I'm sorry. Let me sign in here. Vince Wellidge, Reno resident, J section. Yeah, I just had a couple of comments, questions, because at the last, at the August council meeting, there was some discussion on the exhibit A and B. And Mrs. Kovak said that there was no changes in exhibit B, but there was some in A. But was distributed by Teresa. It looks like exhibit A and B are, nothing has changed. So the ordinance was defeated a couple of months ago, and nothing's been changed, so you're voting on it again. Anyway, I had a couple of questions that had to do with that in the exhibit B. It doesn't look like there's enough details in some of these statements or items in there. The first one is the confirmation of the compliance with state and federal environmental regulations. So does that mean that a environmental compliance report is needed? It doesn't really specify what the confirmation would be. And the other question I had, a quick question, is it a statement about sworn affidavit prepared and signed by an RF engineer confirming that the facility confirms with applicable government regulations? Okay, so is the sworn affidavit, what exactly is that? Is that a, the NIER report, which is, which we've mentioned here before? Is that the report that specifies the minimum approach distances to the general public? Or is it actually a certification, some kind of certification report that needs to get initialized and then reviewed later? So I think this, you know, there's a, just a couple of details that may help the issue with the health, safety, and environment, and welfare question. I mean, there was a long discussion at the council, and it seemed like there was some kind of consensus, but yet in the latest ordinance, nothing was changed. That statement's still the same. Anyway, in light of what Mr. Forbes said, I wanted to make a couple. And as it relates to this confirmation report, certification of the, of the facility, there's a couple of statements in a ordinance that was passed by Marymont two years ago. And it says that any proposed increase in the effective radiated power or any proposed change in the frequency use, the applicant shall submit updated certifications for review by the village. And the other statement is, at the village's sole discretion, a qualified independent radio frequency engineer selected by and under contract to the village may be retained to review certification for compliance with FCC reservations. All costs associated with the village's review of these certifications shall be reported responsible by the applicant. So anyway, I mean, that doesn't seem to, this ordinance was passed two years ago in Marymont, and it doesn't seem to be in conflict with Ohio law that seems to be used for, to negate, you know, negate everything that we've been proposing. Anyway, that's all I had. Thank you.
Anybody else? Okay, moving on, unfinished business. Ordinance number 2022-05-CD, second reading, adopting chapter 937 of the Village of Green Hills codified ordinances regarding small cell facilities. Mr. Halter.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I have ordinance 2022-05-CD, adopting chapter 937 of the Village of Green Hills codified ordinances regarding small cell facilities. Whereas council of the Village of Green Hills has determined it is in the best interest of the village to implement certain regulations related to small cell facilities in the public right of way, and whereas it is the desire of council to adopt such regulations. Now therefore be it ordained by the council of the Village of Green Hills, Ohio, members elected thereto concurring. Section one, that chapter 937 of the Village of Green Hills codified ordinances is hereby adopted as set forth in exhibit A, and proposed administrative design guidelines are outlined in exhibit B, attached hereto and incorporated herein by reference. Section two, that all other provisions of the Village of Green Hills codified ordinances shall remain in full force and effect. Section three, that the ordinance shall take effect and be enforced from and after the earliest period provided by law. I move that we accept this ordinance.
Do we have a second?
My second.
It's been moved and seconded. Any discussion?
Yeah, I'd just like to make a comment. Maybe you remember, Jeff, that after questions that council had were answered by you, in the end, I only made the change to the actual ordinance, where we defined what was exhibit A and what was exhibit B. I didn't recall making any changes to the text.
None of there any changes.
Yeah, I just remember actually changing.
If it helps to clarify.
Clarification, yeah.
The change was just clarifying what is exhibit A and what was exhibit B, and what actually becomes part of the code, the codified ordinances. And that's exhibit A. Exhibit B are the administrative design guidelines. Those don't actually go with the code book. And that was a little confusing the first time, so we just, we clarified that. That was the only change, but the text remained the same.
Clerk call the roll.
Mr. Halter?
Aye.
Ms. Hermes?
Aye.
Mr. Lee?
Absolutely not.
Ms. Hudson?
Aye.
Ms. Hosmanoglu?
Ms. Walter?
Aye.
All right, ordinance number 2022-05-CD, adopting chapter 937 of the Village of Green Hills codified ordinances regarding cell, small cell facilities, passes. Next item on the agenda is new business. Resolution number 2022-R23-S, authorizing the municipal manager to execute an agreement with the Hamilton County Board of Commissioners for fire hydrant repairs. Ms. Hermes?
Resolution number 2022-R23-S, authorizing the municipal manager to execute an agreement with the Hamilton County Board of Commissioners for the fire hydrant repair. Whereas Hamilton County currently has adequate manpower to perform fire hydrant repairs within the Village of Green Hills, and whereas the Village of Green Hills desires the services of Hamilton County Planning and Development Department in repairing fire hydrants within the Village of Green Hills. Now therefore be it resolved by the council of the Village of Green Hills, Ohio, members elected thereto concurring. Section one, that the municipal manager is hereby authorized to execute an agreement related to fire hydrant repairs in the form of the agreement attached hereto as exhibit A incorporated herein by reference. Section two, that the municipal manager is hereby, is further authorized to execute any and all necessary documents to fulfill the terms of the agreement. Section three, that this resolution shall take effect and be enforced from and after the earliest period allowed by law. I move to adopt this resolution.
Do we have a second?
My second.
Been moved and seconded. Is any comments or questions? All right, hearing none. Clerk call the roll.
Ms. Walter?
Aye.
Ms. Hosmanoglu?
Aye.
Ms. Hudson?
Aye.
Mr. Lee?
Aye.
Ms. Hermes?
Aye.
Mr. Halter?
Aye.
Resolution number 2022-R23-S, authorizing the municipal manager to execute an agreement with the Hamilton County Board of Commissioners for fire hydrant repair, passes. Next resolution is 2022-24-F, resolution making supplemental appropriations and transfers. And Jack, you're not doing this, right?
That's correct.
Jennifer? Okay.
Resolution number 2022-R24-F, resolution making supplemental appropriations and transfers. Whereas the 2022 annual appropriations that were adopted on December 14th, 2021 are to be amended, and whereas appropriations must not exceed total available resources of the village per Ohio Revised Code, section 50705.36A5. Therefore, an amended certificate of estimated resources has been requested from the county budget commission. Now therefore be it resolved by the council of the Village of Green Hills, Ohio. Section one, since certain actions are needed and the money is appropriated so to permit the Village of Green Hills to meet its fiscal obligations for the year 2022, the following items of expenditure are to supplement the appropriations for expenditure for the year 2022. Fund description, General Fund 1000.115, council and legislative. Appropriation, $20,000. Change, $10,000, for a total of $30,000. Section two, that the money transfers of funds be made from previously appropriated monies, none. Section three, this resolution shall take effect and be in full force from and after the earliest date allowed by law. Mr. Mayor, I move to adopt this resolution.
Second. It's been moved and seconded. Any comments or questions? Hearing none. Clerk call the roll.
Ms. Hudson?
Aye.
Ms. Hosmanoglu?
Aye.
Mr. Halter?
Aye.
Ms. Hermes?
Aye.
Mr. Lee?
Aye.
And Ms. Halter?
Aye.
Resolution number 2022-24-F, making supplemental appropriations and transfers, passes. Next resolution, number 2022-25-F, resolution accepting the amounts and rates as determined by the budget commission and authorizing necessary tax levies and certifying them to the county auditor. Ms. Osmanoglu?
Resolution number 2022-25-F, resolution accepting the amounts and rates as determined by the budget commission and authorizing the necessary tax levies and certifying them to the county auditor. Whereas the Village of Green Hills, Ohio, in accordance with the provisions of law, has previously adopted a tax budget for the next succeeding fiscal year commencing January 2023. Whereas the budget commission of Hamilton County, Ohio, has certified its action thereon to this council together with an estimate by the county auditor of the rate of each tax necessary to be levied by this council, and what part thereof is without, and what part within, the 10 mil tax limitations. Now therefore be it resolved by the council of the Village of Green Hills, Ohio. Section one, that the amounts and rates as determined by the budget commission in its certification be and the same are hereby accepted. Section two, that there be and is hereby levied on the tax duplicate of said village the rate of each tax necessary to be levied within and without the 10 mil limitations as contained as exhibit A attached hereto and made a part of this resolution. Section three, that this resolution shall be in full force and take effect from and after its passage. Mr. Mayor, I move for the adoption of this resolution.
It's been moved and seconded. Any comments or questions? All right, hearing none. Clerk call the roll.
Ms. Hosmanoglu?
Aye.
Ms. Walter?
Aye.
Ms. Hudson? Mr. Lee?
Aye.
Mr. Halter?
Aye.
And Ms. Hermes?
Aye.
Okay, resolution number 2022-25-F, accepting the amounts and rates as determined by the budget commission and authorizing necessary tax levies and certifying them to the county auditor, passes. And the next item, we have any council comments anybody wants to make about anything?
I just, I would like to say something.
Okay.
Concerning the small cell ordinance. This follows the state of Ohio law. This follows the state of Ohio law specifically, and in fact, in most cases, it quotes the wording of the Ohio state law. And in that, that regulation, it allows us to control the placement to a limited extent of any small cell facilities within the public right-of-way. The public right-of-way means only the area of real property which is in the village that has dedicated or acquired right-of-way interest in that real property. It shall include the area on, below, or above the present, future streets, alleys, avenues, roads, highways, parkways, boulevards dedicated or acquired as right-of-way. The term does not include the airways above a right-of-way with regard to wireless telecommunications or other non-wire telecommunications or broadcast services, easements obtained by utilities or private easements in plotted subdivisions or tracks, meaning that, that many of the, the utility poles that are in backyards of, of those people living on the east side of Wenton Road within, within the village would not be considered a public right-of-way. I would think some of the poles along Jeff, your, your street could. Visually, I'm, I'm concerned that, that, you know, our original intent was to look at this as an architectural issue. I don't know that that's how this is necessarily going to play out in, in the long run, but we shall see. But I'll say it again, I hope this doesn't come back to bite us in the end, so that's, that's, that's my position.
I'm not sure myself, I don't see how it, I mean, you read something, but I'm not sure how that translate to, translates to biting us, but...
I'm, I'm sorry.
No, I don't understand how you're saying it will come back to bite us. I mean, you just read a whole bunch of stuff, but I don't understand.
I, Jeff, I think if you, you listen to what seems to be saying, saying is that, that one, you know, they, they question, they, there are those who question our attorneys' ability to make, make thoughtful opinions that we make decisions upon. The, the other is that somehow we're supposed to regulate radiation from, from these things. I, I, I really, really, I really, really question.
I didn't see the word radiation in this at all.
Pardon?
I didn't see the word radiation in this.
Well, there isn't.
Okay.
And, and that's bringing up the city or village of Merrimont and what is stated in theirs. I, I question that they have the ability to even do that legally based upon what Ohio state law states. So, you know, it's...
Well, yeah, just, I mean, because, since we're discussing it, I'm more in the camp that I see no harm in having something in place. I think that if there's nothing in place and all of a sudden something happens, we are, we have no leg to stand on to have even a discussion. We're not going to be able to do anything that isn't allowed by the state of Ohio and the federal government. There's, no matter what we say or do, and other than walking ourselves into lawsuit problems, so I don't see the harm in having something in place that at least is a speed bump and we are part of the conversation. If it's not there, we're not part of the conversation. That, that's my logic.
Agreed.
So, heard and understood. Thank you.
Okay, anybody else? I'll go to the calendar.
Anything coming up?
Harvest Fest this Saturday, four to eight, and then also we have Recreation, if I can speak up on that, October 13th at 5:30, and Community Development at 6 o'clock.
Leaf collection starts, so get your leaves out by Monday. If they pass, if you get it out later, just leave them out. They might not have passed it. And then Defensive Tactics on Saturday, 10:15 at 10 a.m.
And I got an email from Chip, so something for us to be thinking about. He's asking about council meeting at the end of December, which would be the 27th after Christmas. We normally try to do just one meeting in December, and it's usually the second week, except Chip says they already have seven events scheduled on that second Tuesday, and so he's suggesting if we could possibly do it on the 20th or earlier. So be thinking about that. And we would need to make sure that we have all the finance ordinances that we need to have if we do it the first week in December, which would probably be nicer than right before Christmas or right after Christmas. All right, we'll decide that next month. And if anybody has anything they would want to put on the agenda for the work session, the next work session, let me know by Wednesday, the prior week of the work session. And if not, we'll, if you think of something later, we just bring it up as I go around and ask people if they have anything to discuss. All right, I'll get my aide up here to be able to read again. The lighting's not as bright as, is in the council room. Okay, this is an opportunity for residents and non-residents to appear before council. Non-residents must obtain prior permission, which I have not received anything from prior, from non-residents. It's time for citizens to comment on matters before council. When recognized, please come forward to the podium, complete the sign-in sheet, verbally indicate if you're a resident of Green Hills, and state your comments. If you have questions, questions will be recorded and referred to the manager's office for response. This will allow time for thoughtful and thorough consideration to be given to each question. Council meetings are recorded for ease of transcription. Comments are limited to four minutes. Speakers may not yield any or all their time to other speakers.
Do we have anybody?
Monique Nathan-Halter, Green Hills resident. When I was at the work session a couple of weeks ago, kind of talked about this tree issue, and I have not heard anything from the village regarding the tree in the right-of-way that is, that had a big branch fall off of it and knock off the street sign. I want to make it clear that we really don't want to have the tree removed, but it would probably be in everybody's best interest if it were trimmed as soon as possible because it did already have a big branch that fell off and knocked off the street sign. And also, it's getting very close to our house. It's already over, there's a branch over our driveway. I am concerned about that tree and the others, and I do have a question. If something were to happen where a branch fell down, that was one of yours that was supposed to be, or the village's that's supposed to be trimmed, are you liable for damages? Because I don't even like parking my car in the driveway anymore for any period of time because of how far over it goes, so I appreciate a solution on this as soon as possible. Thank you.
Yeah, I do have an answer for you, Monique, and I'm sorry I didn't send you an email, but I have contracted for the tree at the corner by the stop sign will be totally removed. The one to the front of the house will be trimmed, pruned.
And that was decided...
I don't have a specific date for you, but it will happen sometime in the next couple of months.
Anybody else?
Yeah, he did feel that it should come down.
Is that the forester?
Yes.
All right, nothing else. Meeting adjourned. Hopefully we'll be back.